Call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Brayden, hi. Levin, Mayor Bella, McCarthy, White.
Here. Here. Please stand for tonight's invocation of the pledge of allegiance. Tonight's invocation will be led by the mayor. Please bow your head. Lord God, we give you thanks and praise for bringing us together tonight to serve you and our neighbor, so that we will make the right decisions for the people of Winter Harbor. We ask you to guide us in wisdom and love, in your goodness, watch over us and all those in authority, so that people everywhere may enjoy freedom, security, and peace. Accept this prayer we offer for ourselves, all leaders in our nation. We ask all this in Jesus's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to God, I cannot deny his majesty America, and to a republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
First item, I need a motion to approve the September 12, 2023 special board meeting minutes.
So.
Any discussion on the minutes? Roll call, please.
Brayden, aye. Levin, aye. Mayor Bella, aye. McCarthy, aye. White, aye. Bruno.
Aye. Motion carried. Okay, go move on to mayor's report. I would like to call up to the front John Ricker for the awarding outstanding citizenship award. John Ricker. That's even better. He didn't even know it. Okay. I'm going to read this. This is from our chief, our interim chief Valardi. Mr. John Ricker, the Winter Harbor Police Department would like to extend their appreciation for your generous acts, which assisted the Winter Harbor PD. Specifically, when asked to lend your expertise in custom woodworking, you designed and built the stand-alone library box in front of the police department. Your attention to detail and expertise were far above what was asked of you. Your donation went a long way in making the entrance a welcoming place where citizens come for help. When asked for your help again in building four devices to aid in the mandatory training of our officers, you again exceeded expectations. With limited instruction on some very large and intricate barricades, you provided us with equipment that we could not have otherwise purchased. For years to come, they will help provide our officers with necessary training that is vital to the safety of all. Your selfless acts are the epitome of human kindness and the backbone of our close-knit community. The fact you did this without asking for recognition is a testament to your character. Thank you again for going above and beyond the call. Your generosity to the police department and the community as a whole will not be forgotten. Congratulations. To get the letter and then here is the citizenship award presented to Jonathan D. Ricker for outstanding citizenship at the Village Winter Harbor Board Trustees Meeting on the 17th day of October in the year 2023. All right, next item, I need a motion to approve the resolution thanking the Winter Harbor Lions Club for the generous donation of a new pier at the Palm on 38 Acre Park.
So.
All right, got the first motion, second discussion. Scott?
Yes, so I'd like to thank the Winter Harbor Lions Club, in particular President Woody Ingram, Regina Ingram, and Terry Sherman for working with the village on this and for their generous donation that they are giving to the villager, to the community. So this will be a Winter Harbor project with the Lions Club agreeing to reimburse upwards to the amount of $31,000 towards the project, and the village will be paying for the removal of the existing fishing pier not to exceed the $4,000 limit. So again, thank the club very much for working with us and for their generous donation and their community service that they've provided for over these many, many years. Thank you.
Terry, where are you? You wanted to say something?
Yes, we have something. We have a presentation for the city. I'm Woody Ingram, Lions president, the 69th president of Winter Harbor. I have a check here for $16,000, which will be half of the new pier, fishing pier to be put in at the heart. I have to stop over here. We will remove the old one, put a new one in.
Okay, I'll be up right up.
Go on, Terry. Go on, Jack. Regina, you should be in there, too.
I'll take the picture.
David will take it for you.
One of you. We have a presentation that this time would like to make. Would Scott Fuller, please come forward?
Scott Fuller, your Lions in Illinois Endowment Fund would like to take this opportunity to welcome each of the ranks, men and women recognized as a foundation fellow. The funds donated will put in the Lions Illinois Endowment Fund in your name. Only earnings from the donation will be used to support our programs, services, and fellow schools. Need vision, hearing aid in the community. The principal of the donation remains forever as its lasting legacy of the commitment to your helping. Finally, Terry Sherman will explain some.
Very briefly, the Lions of Illinois Foundation has one purpose and has to help visually inheriting heritage of the state of Illinois. All funds that go into the foundation are used expressly for those purposes. With this fight, we, as a Lions Club, have donated $500 to the endowment fund, in Scott Fuller's name, recognizing him for his efforts and his help and support all these years. He has bent over backwards to help us as we run our bingo, the brat sale in the park, and whatever we need. And Scott's always been there and has been a pillar of strength force. And while he's not a Lion, although he should be, his efforts and support have helped us raise this kind of money so that we can make improvements in the community such as the village pier or the pier and so on, and also support our work with the visual inheriting heritage. So, thanks very much, Scott. You also received two pins and a patch, which are in the box that we took somewhere.
There's your mayor's picture.
Woody, come on up there.
Did you need your chair?
No, did you want to take your picture? Is your photo up?
The $15,000, yes.
Scott, thank you. Terry, Woody, what's my... I want to congratulate Scott, and I know Scott's been working very closely with the Lions Club for many, many years. Terry, Woody, don't sit down. I have a couple questions.
Woody.
On behalf of the Village Winter Harbor, I want to thank you for this donation, for this pier. And during our meeting, and one thing I learned, which I did not know, but this $31,000 is probably the biggest one-time donation to the village. Is it that?
It's the biggest project we've taken on in the history of our club, 69 years, so.
And when you first came to me with this idea and the cost of this, it blew me away. I really appreciate all the Lions stuff. I mean, you know, with the pandemic, I know it hurt you guys with the bingo, but you still, you know, came out and big time. This is going to be huge. Many times I've been over on that pier and it just rocks all over the place. It's, you know, it's going to be great. It's going to be great for the community and great for the park. So, thank you.
Thank you.
We get a resolution, motion second.
Okay. Brayden?
Aye.
Levin?
Aye.
Mayor Bella?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
White?
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, a couple other things. Sub under mayor's report, the trunk or treat, is this coming Saturday, October 21st? What time is that? 1:00 to 4:00, I think?
3:30.
3:30.
2:30 is the costume.
Okay, thank you. 2:30 and 3:30, okay. Just so everyone will know, please come out and partake in that. Another item, communication of all our events. I want to thank staff and the trustees for all they do. I mean, trustees kind of share everything that event-wise. I've gotten a lot of calls thanking, you know, some people say, "I've never ever seen anything out there on the events," but it's out there all the time now. It's really nice to see because we are a very active community. So I want to thank staff and trustees for all that they do to make sure that gets out, you know, out to advertise. Next few weeks, we'll start planning on Christmas events that'll be coming up real soon. Couple other, one other thing, we put out for, we had three open positions on the Park and Rec Board. Residents applied to be on the Park and Rec Board. I contacted everyone. We had seven applicants. I contacted them all. Everyone to ask some questions and have selected three residents. I didn't make the agenda, so I am making a temporary appointment, and next month we'll make the appointment resolution official. Those three new Park and Rec Board members will be Taylor Bowmer, Madison Hupp, and Darcy Green. Sorry, just want to let everyone know that they will be coming as on as new members. That's all I have under mayor's report, so we move on to village administration's report.
I have no reports.
About clerk's correspondence.
We have nothing.
Move on to new business, committee reports, administration, and community development committee. Trustee McCarthy.
Make a motion to approve accounts payable warrants, 2023-7, and the amounts are $350,162.26.
Right. Any discussion on the warrant? Roll call.
Brayden, aye. Levin, aye. Mayor Bella, aye. McCarthy, aye. White?
Motion carried.
Make a motion to approve the confidentiality and production agreement with Third Millennium Associates.
Okay, motion second. Any discussion on that?
So it's just the utility bills that we talked about, you know, a new bill, a new system.
It's going to make everybody in town happy. No more calls to W L, utility bills, right? Or they just get lost in the mail, you know, because they're tiny, very tiny. Good. And that's going to explain a lot on the bills, just can't wait till that happens. Okay, roll call.
Brayden?
Aye.
Levin?
Aye.
Mayor Bella?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
White?
Aye.
Motion carried.
I would satisfy the rules of the president and board trustees to waive the first and second readings of an ordinance annexing property located at 43042 North Foslin Avenue. I'm making a motion.
Yes, I will say.
Thank you.
All right, any discussion on that? Okay, roll call, please.
Brayden, aye. Levin?
Aye.
Mayor Bella?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
White?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Make a motion to approve the petition submitted by Woodview Ridge LLC granting vacation of village property at 11th Street Culpage Act.
Second.
Okay, discussion on that item?
That will require, the final version of this will require an ordinance, which will have to come back after this is discussed.
Okay. All right, roll call.
Aye. Mayor Bella?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
White?
Aye.
Johnny.
Levin? Yeah.
Okay, motion carried.
Make a motion to approve a special event permit for Sparks Dispensary's grand opening party at November 3, 2023, at 2:00 P.M.
Second.
Okay, discussion on that, another opening. This is for, this is for, like, food trucks?
I didn't look over it yet.
Case of detail for that.
It's a bunch of fun things that they're going to do.
Yeah. Is it a one-day or two-day event?
Mayor, it's a one-day event, and there is one food truck included on the event permit.
Just one?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion on that? All right, roll call.
Brayden, aye. Levin?
Aye.
Mayor Bella?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
White?
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you, Trustee McCarthy. We move on to public safety. Trustee White.
Thank you. I make a motion to accept notice of state award for a grant from IDOT for the 2023-24 STEM grant, up to $31,633.20 in wage reimbursement contingent on Bob Long's review of the grant.
Right. All right, any discussion on that? All right, roll call, please.
Brayden, aye. Levin?
Aye.
Mayor Bella?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
White?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Make a motion to amend of the contractual services agreement with the village of Winter Harbor for the provision of security services.
Second.
Discussion on that item? All right, roll call.
Brayden?
Aye.
Levin?
Aye.
Mayor Bella?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
White?
Aye.
Thank you, Trustee White. We move on to public works of recreation. Trustee Mayor Bella.
So just like to make a motion for the consideration of the lowest bidder for the Village Hall roof project not to exceed $250,000.
Second. All right, discussion?
Well, we've been waiting. We've had this out for a bit. Nobody wants to do it. It has to be a minority conference, and that is part of our brand. So we've been waiting, 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 and finally got somebody to communicate back to us. So that's where we're at.
Just want everyone to know, too, that 250,000, we're paying out, it's 250,000 that we got from a grant. So it's not going to cost us anything to do our roof. So that's another thing I wanted to make sure, clarify.
So we put the names of the contractor and the public director here tonight?
Do we know? I don't know.
Seal-type exterior.
Seal-type?
Seal-type exteriors.
Okay.
Thank you. Incorporated.
Roll call, please.
Brayden, aye. Levin?
Aye.
Mayor Bella?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
White?
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you, Trustee Mayor Bella. We move on to public comments. I'd like you to provide us with your name and your address. We don't know this person.
My name is Lynette Haverbeck. I live at 1427 West Drive here in Winter Harbor. I am on the executive tour for Community 365, and I am a co-executive director of the Miss Winter Harbor Community Scholarship Program and Princess Program. We're a young pageant, and we're looking to bridge the gap left between kind of community pageants and the Miss Illinois system. In 2021, we applied, and after a long approval process, including some required restructuring, we became a festival pageant to Miss Illinois. Since then, our pageant has accomplished a first for Miss Illinois each year. In 2022, our Miss Rebecca Aug became the first woman to wear the Miss Winter Harbor title on the Miss Illinois stage, and I'm very proud to say that she has moved to Minnesota and won a local there, and she'll be competing for Miss Minnesota as well. So that's wonderful. In 2023, our Abigail Schultz became the first Eagle Scout to walk the Miss Illinois stage. So that was a huge accomplishment as well. Our new 2024 title holders, Miss Danielle McDonald and Team Miss Delaney McCarthy have already registered with Miss America and also with Miss Illinois, where they will compete in June. Delaney will be the first to wear the Miss Winter Harbor team title on the Miss Illinois stage. So each year that we've been there, we've had first for Miss Illinois, which is pretty amazing. Our princesses are allowed to participate in Miss Illinois Week as part of the Miss America, sorry, Little Sister Program. We sent three princesses the first year and four the second year. That's truly amazing experience, and it's honestly one of my favorite parts of that entire program, that the girls get to do that. On behalf of my co-executive director, Jean Bynes, who's here with us today, as well as Kim Rock and Lee Wood, our pageant directors, and Alyssa Payson and Courtney Hutchinson, our princess directors, I just want to say thank you to the village for allowing us to partner with you on events and community projects that, in our opinion, make Winter Harbor the best village in all of Illinois. Our title holders are going to briefly explain their community service initiatives they're working on this year. I think it's important for you to know what we're working on, just in case there's anything that we can do to partner more and anything we have that overlapped. Our junior Miss Adriana Ash is unable to attend tonight. Her community services card is full, so she will organize events where people make homing cards for cancer patients, giving them words of love and encouragement, and also veterans for thanking them for their service. So first, I'm going to ask Palin Wood to come up and tell you just a little bit about what our princess program is up to.
Good evening. My name is Palin Wood, and I'm your Team Miss Winter Harbor 2023. Previous title holders and our pageants are given the opportunity to become mentors in our princess program. Our princess program is a peer-led community service organization for girls 3 to 27. Young girls are taught the importance of community service and to be mentored by our older girls. Our princess organization has its own community service initiative, Spare Change, Spare Monarchs. Our princesses collect spare change and will organize a registered monarch waystation on an empty lot in Winter Harbor. This program will be supervised by our directors, and it's 100% girl-led. We will organize all aspects of this project, including create budgets, develop plans, research, research plans, and finally, apply to be registered a monarch waystation. While helping the struggling monarchs population, we will also learn the importance of community service, and that one girl can make a difference. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Danielle McDonald, Year Miss Winter Harbor 2024. My platform this year will be eating disorder awareness. I'm volunteering with the National Eating Disorder Awareness Association. I will be spreading eating disorder awareness and their differences, showing how to talk to somebody about eating disorders and all the different kinds that come with them. Along both spreading positive positivity through social media and my platform, helping this community come together to fight this issue. We have over 10,000 people diagnosed each year from eating disorders, and an estimated 30 million people being diagnosed with them in the U.S. alone. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Delaney McCarthy. I'm your Team Miss Winter Harbor 2024. My community service initiative is called Play It Forward. I want to promote music education in our community. It has exponential impact on children's education, as well as helps form togetherness and community. I want to increase music opportunities for kids in our community and make it more accessible for everybody. Thank you.
I'm Hopey James, well-known in Winter Harbor, and my special impact initiative is Resilience and Resplioation. I think we can help by doing our walks and picking up garbage.
Thank you for letting us present today.
I'd like to thank all the queens for coming in and letting us know what they're doing and what their goals are. That's wonderful. Please let us know if there's anything we can do as a ward individually or together to help you accomplish your goal. Thank you.
And if it's okay, I'm going to let them go today for time and dinner and other things for you.
Thank you for coming.
I need to see where all these people are going to be for the girls.
You can't wear them.
All right, anybody else for public comment? All right, we move on to unfinished business. I'll start now. It's Trustee Brayden.
I, I'm sorry, I was late for a second there. I don't really have any unfinished business, but I would like to thank the Lions Club. Congratulations to Scott. Congratulations to Mr. Ricker. Congratulations to the new Parks and Rec members, and congratulations to all the queens and their projects and great goals and how exciting they are. So I just want to thank everyone and congratulate everyone for that.
Thank you, Trustee Brayden, Trustee White. Just, it's very exciting to see so many positive things going on in the community. It was nice to, it's a lot of different stuff, but it's more interesting than most of the things we talk about up here. So it's nice to have the recognition of everybody, you know, John Ricker, Scott, the queens. So just very proud to live in this town.
Thank you, Trustee McCarthy. Trustee White.
Thank you. On October 25th, our police department is hosting a community roll car, roll call. What this does is it's about building and maintaining partnerships between our police department and the residents. So you can learn about crime prevention and engage in open conversations with the police department. This will be at 6:00 P.M. here at the village hall. So come in.
In this car, White. The freshmen will be served.
Oh, that's almost the part.
I'm glad that you said that, because I was going to break. Thank you, Trustee White. Trustee, go ahead. Trustee Mayor Bella.
So, along with my, we do have for recreation, pardon, basketball signups are going to be October 31st. You know what's going to turn out for that. I would like to thank the Lions Club. That pier is going to be great. We've always helped them. I mean, they've helped us, we helped them. Usually waive their fees and stuff. We're trying to do stuff to help them with the bingo and everything. At the last carnival, I stayed late and helped pack up their stuff. I mean, Woody had a little health issue, but everything works out. I'll stay and I'll show it to the company. And we have our truck or treat event. On the public work side, we finally got our hot box, so Tim tests me today.
Six weeks early.
We, we've been waiting for that for a long time, and it helps us do a lot of stuff. We've been fighting and kicking for that, and Tim had for a long time, so we finally got the board to approve it, and I'm happy. So it's going to help our residents, it's going to help us do these little patch jobs we've been wanting to do for a long time, so everything's getting into place. And we also have a facility maintenance program that's done very well, so we're starting, starting to do more of that. We have a mechanic that, we have our stuff out there. We're doing a lot more than we used to do, so we're saving the village an exponential amount of money. It was through the efforts of getting lucky and getting a person, but actually Tim and them putting that into place and making it work for us and all our other departments, so just like to say thanks for that. It goes unlooked a lot, but we definitely are noticed, saved, so just like to say thanks. It takes a lot to coordinate all that, and since, you know, it kind of helped, it kind of helped with our building being fixed, because of course, Tim to be down here, which him and David, to do a lot more together, so Tim's taking a lot more responsibilities too, I don't know that people know that, but I know that, and I'm very appreciative of it, so that's all I got.
Great. Now, I'll add to that, police maintenance, facility, I just got this paper, police maintenance, thirty-two thousand in savings, and facility, seventy thousand in savings thus far.
Yes.
I mean, that's amazing.
Half the fiscal year.
Yes, being and doing it and helps us save us a bundle of labor, so, thank you. And then also, I'd like to thank the police department for their monthly activity report. Fantastic, always. And Sanjay, for your report too, I love, I love these, I file them away and I go over and I check to see if you're actually working. I'm just kidding. I know, everybody does, like, breaks out of the village, and, you know, it's, it's, I don't know, it's a pleasure being the mayor here, it really is. I work hard, but these guys keep me in the loop, just about every Thursday or Tuesday, which I was here today most of the day too, but they keep me in the loop, I appreciate that. And that's, that's all I have. I do, we do need to go into closed session to discuss appointment, employment discipline, performance, collective bargaining, and purchase of lease of real property or setting a price for, for the sale of lease of municipal property. Does I need a motion to go into closed session?
Sorry.
Oh.
Brayden?
Aye.
Brayden, make the motion, and?
Wait a second.
Okay. Roll call.
Brayden?
Aye.
Levin?
Aye.
Mayor Bella?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
White?
Aye.
All right. Closed session.